Good evening. Today is December 19th, 2022, and it is 7:00 PM. This is a meeting of Troy City Council, and I am Bob Phillips, the President Pro Tem. Filling in for the mayor tonight is President Council Bill Lutz. If you all would please silence your cellphones in case you have anything on an audible basis, that would be outstanding. Tonight, we have an invocation by Mr. Pierce and a pledge of allegiance. Would you all stand?
And for the invocation, we have Pastor Andy Warren, who will be leading it.
Okay. Would you like to come up to the microphone, please, and introduce yourself, please?
Good evening. Mr. Pierce told me I had a half an hour.
I thought he was wrong.
It is an honor to pray with you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I'm Andy, Pastor Victory Church in the Tiptree area. One of my core values is to set an example. Scripture says that we are to set an example in the way we speak, the way we live, love, and our faith, and our purity. That's not easy. So I want to pray for God's wisdom and for our collective council to hear from God as we move into this holiday season. God, we thank you for this council. May it be a productive meeting this evening. I pray that you enable each member to remember that we are an example to our community, the way we speak, the way we live, how we love, how we lead, and then our faith. So give us your wisdom as we lead this community. We're grateful for your grace. As we approach Christmas, may we be reminded that the greatest gift given was your grace and your love to us. So be with each of us. Give us that collective wisdom to guide and provide counsel to the city of Troy. In Jesus' name, and we all say, amen.
For the unity of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce, for that invitation. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Mr. Severt is present. Contrary to the agenda, there is no excuse for me, but no excuses needed either.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Woodden?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. This evening, we have a public hearing on amendment, an amendment to ordinance O-422022. This is direction to the zoning code, section 1143.22, parentheses M, parentheses 6B. So the public hearing is in session. Is there anyone that would like to approach and speak in favor of the ordinance? Is there anyone that would like to approach and speak against the ordinance? Please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mrs. Knight, would you please read a summary of the minutes for December 5, 2022?
Minutes of Council, December 5, 2022. Committee reports. Buildings and Utilities Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, declaring the repair of the Cornish Road water line an emergency. Finance Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, increasing the authorization for the 2022 fleet maintenance contract by $50,000. Committee recommended that the 2023 appropriation ordinance be prepared and that funding be approved for the Troy Development Council, Troy Main Street, and Troy Recreation Association, Inc. Law and Ordinance Committee gave an oral report regarding receipt of some liquor license applications. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing the preliminary consent legislation associated with the paving of East Main Street by ODOT. Resolution number R-782022, increased fleet maintenance authorization for 2022, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-792022, authorizing the emergency repair of the Cornish Road water line, was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-802022, consent with ODOT for the paving of East Main Street was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-812022, funding to Troy Development Council, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-822022, funding to Troy Main Street, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-832022, funding and agreement with the Troy Recreation Association, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-602022, amend ordinance O-4222 to correct an error, was given first reading. Ordinance number O-612022, appropriating funds for 2023, was given first reading and failed suspension. Ordinance number O-622022, a reappropriation for year 2022, was given first reading and was adopted. Following comments, Council adjourned at 7:27 PM.
Thank you, ma'am. How does council wish to proceed on this?
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Rozell and a second by Mr. Twist.
Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
I will remind, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. I will remind council, my hearing is very bad, so if you guys all chime in at the same time, I may not get the right one, so correct me if I do miscall you. So we have some committee reports this evening, and the first committee is Community Partnerships, and that is being presented by Chairman, Mr. Rozell.
Thanks, sir. First one we have is this committee met on December 12th to consider the petition filed for a Type II expedited annexation from Concord Township of 58.798 acres located north of the Edgewater subdivision. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by state law related to the SWINK annexation. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, the committee supports emergency legislation.
Any comments from council on this item? Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Rozell, you have the next.
This committee met on December 12th to consider professional environmental services agreement for the abandoned gas station at 206 South Market Street. A grant was approved in total amount of $250,000 that will reimburse the city for all related costs, including investigation, cleanup, demolition, and filing-related documents. It has been recommended that a professional services agreement be authorized with the firm of Burgess and Nipoll Incorporated to perform the work and not to exceed the cost of $182,948. The balance of the grant covers the pre-application costs and demolition. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing Director of Public Service and Safety to enter in a professional environmental services agreement with Burgess and Nipoll Incorporated of Columbus, Ohio, to investigate and clean up an abandoned gas station property located at 206 South Market Street, Troy, Ohio, and submit a no further action letter to Bureau of Underground Storage Tank Regulations at a cost not to exceed $182,948. Respectfully submitted by myself as chairman, Mr. Jeff Schilling, and Mr. Todd Severt, as well as the previous report.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from council on this item? None. We'll move along to the Community Partnerships Committee. Again, Mr. Rozell.
Last one tonight, we have Knight. We also met on 12th to consider planning an opt-out natural gas aggregation program on May 2nd, 2023 ballot for households and very small businesses. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing language on the May 2nd, 2023 ballot, giving the city the authority to aggregate the retail natural gas loads in the city and, for that purpose, enter into service agreements with the aggregation to occur automatically, except where any person elects to opt out of the program. As there is a February 1, 2023 deadline for certifying ballot items to the Miami County Board of Elections, this committee supports emergency legislation. And this report has been submitted by Mr. Todd Severt, Mr. Jeff Schilling, and myself as chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions by council members on this item? Seeing none, we'll move along to the Law and Ordinance Committee. And Mrs. Snee, you have this one?
Thank you. Committee members Phillips and Severt met on December 12th to consider a new ordinance provision to address tree trimming and noxious overgrowth. The current procedure is time-consuming and allows the offense to continue longer than should be acceptable. The proposed ordinance would mirror the procedures for addressing tall grass and weeds. This committee concurs with staff that there should be a better procedure to address noxious overgrowth and recommends that legislation be prepared to establish a new ordinance that would address tree trimming and noxious overgrowth. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Severt, and myself as chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from council on this item? Seeing none? Again, you have number two.
Yes. Committee members Phillips and Severt met on December 12th related to the speed limit of Peters Road between Archer Drive and Swales Road and Riverside Drive between Adams Street and north of Duke Park. The speed limits in these areas vary based on part of the roadways being outside the corporate limits. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to request the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform and review a study related to the speed limits of Peters Road between Archer Drive and Swales Road and Riverside Drive between Adams Street and north of the Paul G. Duke Park, and that the Director be authorized to establish speed limits deemed appropriate and safe based on the study and the response of ODOT related to stabilizing the speed limits for those road portion areas. And that is again submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Severt, and myself as chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Members of council, have any questions or concerns or comments on this one? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move along with a Law and Ordinance Committee, again by Mrs. Snee, and this is regarding a Trex liquor permit.
Yes. Committee members Phillips and Severt met on December 12th to consider a request for support of the C-2 Trex liquor permit application of Fuel 7 LLC for a new location at 809 South Market Street. This committee concurs that this would be an economic development project with the creation of five new jobs, and recommends that a letter of support be submitted by the Director of Public Service and Safety for the C-2 Trex liquor permit application as requested by Fuel 7 LLC for a new location at 809 South Market Street. As this is not a matter of legislation, this committee asks that this recommendation to support the Trex application be accepted by council so that a letter can be provided in the application that the applicant will submit to the Division of Liquor Control. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Severt, and myself as chair, and I would move that that letter of support be submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Snee and a second by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, ma'am. We have some oral reports this evening, and I believe Mr. Pierce is going to handle all of those.
Mr. Tyrington requested approval of the reappointment of Mark A. Douglas for a new two-year term on the Income Tax Board of Review. This committee supports the reappointment. I move that council approves the reappointment of Mark A. Douglas to the Income Tax Board Review for a new term of January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pierce and a second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Pierce?
Mayor Odo requested the approval of the reappointment of William Wolk to the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Loan Review Committee for a new four-year term. This committee supports the reappointment. I move the council approves the reappointment of William Wolk to the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Loan Review Committee for a new term of January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pierce and a second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Continue.
Mayor Odo requested reappointments to Community Improvement Corporation, which reappointments are approved annually. This committee supports the reappointments. I move the council approves the reappointments of William E. Lukens, Bradley Bixler, Joseph Graves, Edward Westmeyer, Kathy Vukovic, and Gary Fisher to the Community Improvement Corporation for new terms January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023.
Second.
Again, we have a motion by Mr. Pierce and a second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And your last, I believe.
Thank you. Mayor Odo requests the approval of reappointment of Sonia Holycross, John Keller, and Ruby Vilabolos to the new three-year terms on the Human Relations Commission. This committee supports the reappointment. I move that council approves the reappointments of Sonia Holycross, John Keller, and Ruby Vilabolos to the Human Relations Commission for the new term of January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025.
Second.
And again, we have a motion by Mr. Pierce and a second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
At this point, we have a time period, excuse me, for any one in the audience to comment on any of the items of business that's coming with council this evening. If you have any comments pro or con on any of the items on the agenda, the resolutions or the ordinances, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have a two-minute time limit, and Mr. Kerber, our city attorney, will be the official time keeper. So please step forward if you have a comment.
My name is Mickey Hammer. I live at 1160 Red Maple Drive. I'm here to talk about the capital improvement plan, part of the budget. But before I do that, I did want to say how much I understand what it's like to put a budget together. I used to do that when I used to work, and I know it's a time-consuming process with a lot of give and take, and I'm here to ask if you would give a little bit on this one. I'm referring to the traffic signal. It's on State Route 718, well, that's the name of the project, anyway, on Washington Road, Meadow Bridge Way. It's called Design and Install. It's on page 64 of the budget. I was under the impression, maybe falsely, in talks with one of the city council members, that there was going to be some money appropriated to at least do a study, and I can tell you that, living in that subdivision with the other 130 homes that are in there, there's a lot of traffic that comes out of that subdivision, and I can tell you that probably 90% of them can give you an example of some dangerous habits of drivers coming out of that subdivision, coming down Washington and making turns, and just generally on 718. You also, if you've been out there, you already know that the school is there, and when there's letting out or getting in, it becomes a multiple issue, and so it becomes a problem, all right? Again, I personally have witnessed cars coming, let's see, that's east on 718, and somebody's trying to make a left onto Washington, and they swing into that little lane and don't even try slowing down. That's a dangerous situation. I have witnessed accidents at that intersection as well, and I think waiting five more years, because there's zero dollars appropriated for that line item in the budget for the next five years. Again, when I moved in there in '15, there were about 30 homes there. Now there's 132. You've got 50 more homes that have just gone in up in Washington Road at the reserves. You've got another 100 homes going in down at the Redwood. A conservative number of two and a half cars per house, you've got 700 cars.
Gotcha.
I respectfully ask that you add some money in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any comments on any of the items?
I am Steve Hennerson. I live at 975 Dickerson Drive. In response to some of the little articles in both the Dayton paper and the Troy paper, I got a copy of this year's proposed budget. And I know you were asking for people's comments on it, but as I mentioned, and I sent some comments to some of you, and I've got really prompt responses, which I very much appreciate. But I have to say that it's a 125-page document, and it's really hard to stay awake reading it, oh, by the way. So if you want the public to be participative in this process, that's not the document that you want. There's just too much detail in there, and it's not for everybody to read. And I'm suggesting that if you want the public to participate or review this, you're going to have to come up with something a little bit better, a little shorter, kind of the headline news. We don't need, you know, you could probably get rid of 124 of the 125 pages and just have a summary for the rest of us. I know some of you are on the Finance Committee, and you probably review it, and I know the city government, you work on it every day, you probably get monthly or quarterly statements. I don't. So when I just get this document, that's just one document, trying to go through it and make sense of it to see, geez, where's our money really being spent, and does it make sense to spend it that way? I have a very, very hard time to do that. And that's just my only comments. I don't expect you to start a new one tomorrow, but if you expect the public to participate in it, please, please, work together, come up with something that is decipherable for common people. I mean, it's really tough going. And I put together budgets, and I used to do that for a living. This was really tough to go through. It really was, especially trying to compare numbers to where they came from, how you on the committee review it, I really don't know. I just assume you're probably really super smart to do it, but anyway, please, please help.
The only comment that I would give to that, Mr. Hennerson, is that if we put out a shortened list, we'd be accused of hiding something.
I think you're hiding it now.
In plain sight. Thank you, sir. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other comments coming from any one of the audience? Seeing none, we'll go into the business session with resolutions, and Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R-842022?
Resolution number R-842022, resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 58.798 acres more or less in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy and declaring an emergency. This is the SWINK annexation, and this was reported on this evening, first reading.
Second. We have a motion to suspend by Mr., and a second by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Just giving you a little second there to check the boxes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Knight, would you now read Resolution R-852022?
Resolution R-852022, resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 58.798 acres more or less in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the second piece of legislation associated with the SWINK annexation, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend by Mr. Rozell and a second by Mr. Woodden. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist to adopt and a second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R-862022?
Resolution number R-862022, resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing 58.798 acres more or less in Concord Township to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the third piece of legislation to be considered for the SWINK annexation, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Schilling and a second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
And we have a motion by Mr. Twist to adopt and a second by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll? Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R 87-2022?
Resolution number R 87-2022. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter an agreement for professional services with Burgess and Nyphle, Inc. of Columbus, Ohio, for environmental services for the investigation and cleanup of the abandoned gas station property at 206 South Market Street, Troy, Ohio. This is the first reading. All the expenses associated therewith will be covered by a grant agreement.
Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Severt and a second by Mr. Schilling to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt by Mr. Rozell and a second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R 88-2022?
Resolution number R 88, 2022. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to request that the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, perform review a study related to the speed limit of Peters Road from Archer Drive to Swales Road and Riverside Drive from Addams Street to north of the Paul G. Duke Park, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to establish a speed limit for those roadway areas based on the response of ODOT. This is the first reading, the Saturday report this evening.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt by Mr. Rozell and a second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R 88-2022?
Resolution number R 88, 2022. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to request that the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, perform review a study related to the speed limit of Peters Road from Archer Drive to Swales Road and Riverside Drive from Addams Street to north of the Paul G. Duke Park, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to establish a speed limit for those roadway areas based on the response of ODOT. This is the first reading, the Saturday report this evening.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And we're speaking, passed around to be signed.
They've got apparently several different pens going.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into ordinances, and Mrs. Knight, would you please read Ordinance O 60-2022?
As soon as I get to a new page.
Sure.
Ordinance number O 60, 2022. Ordinance amending Ordinance number O 42, 2022 to make a correction in Section 1143.22 M 6B. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission to correct a typographical error, and this will go to a committee meeting on next Tuesday, and this is the second reading.
Yeah, the public hearing is on December 19th. Got it. Mrs. Knight, excuse me, yes, Mrs. Knight, would you please read Ordinance O 61-2022?
Ordinance number O 61, 2022. Ordinance appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the City of Troy, Ohio, for the year 2023. This is the appropriation ordinance, which is also the adoption of the budget, second reading.
Before any motions are made, please, Mr. Schilling has requested to make a statement prior to this.
Thank you. In examining the budget, you know, this is, one of the reasons that Mr. Rozell and I voted against an emergency legislation on the budget was to give the residents of Troy, you know, and ourselves, time to look at this budget, and while it's sometimes very difficult to do, to at least have the time to look at it and make comments and find some other things that, you know, maybe needed to be addressed. And one of the things that was brought up tonight was this traffic light out at the intersection of Washington and State Route 718. And having lived out there for 16 years in that area, this intersection has become more and more busy as the City of Troy continues to grow. As has already been alluded, the Stonebridge Meadows subdivision started out six years ago, seven years ago, with 30 houses. Today, there's 132 houses in that subdivision, and the main exit to that subdivision is across the street from this intersection. I was out there at a homeowners meeting several months ago, and one of the other, somebody, one of the other attendees came in to the meeting and said, oh, by the way, we just had another accident out there in front of the subdivision. It's a very, very difficult street maneuver, area to maneuver, because you now have Washington, but you also have McCagge Road, you know, within a couple hundred yards of each other, and it's just, it's a very, very busy intersection. We look at the 132 homes that are out there in Stonebridge Meadows. We have a reserve of Washington that has 50 homes. In the last year, we have had three substantial annexations along Washington Road. We have no idea what the plans are for those, but we can only imagine. We've also, over the course of time, have all been very proud of the growth that the City of Troy has seen, and, you know, we see new businesses, and we see, you know, people coming into Troy to visit our beautiful downtown, and, you know, Troy's had some tremendous growth, and many, you know, this intersection is one of the ways that people get to Troy. So you see more and more traffic coming in in the mornings, you see more and more traffic leaving in the afternoons, and then, of course, then you have this Concord School sitting right on the corner. And as we have expressed many, many times, the City of Troy has no say in what Troy City Schools do with their properties. You know, they've had a couple of levy attempts to improve the city schools. The voters have turned down both substantially, and there's no indication in present that anytime soon that they're going to take another look at this. I think they're just in the process now of formulating plans to get started again. But there's no indication that Concord School, having been there for over 100 years, is not going to be there for a long while. And, you know, you see in the mornings and in the afternoons, traffic backs up in and out of that parking lot. Every student, almost every student, we now have a few walkers, but almost every student in that school, plus the staff, comes to that school via some type of form of transportation, vehicles or buses or whatever. In the mornings and the afternoons, parents that have a difficult time getting their children on the buses, drive their child, their children to school, and there's traffic backed up, it comes out of the parking lot, it wraps around on the McCagge and goes down McCagge several hundred yards, both morning and night, and I've talked to the, morning and afternoon, I've talked to the Chief of Police about this, and he said they are absolutely powerless to do anything about that. They have no desire to get involved in that whatsoever. And so, again, this is a very, very busy area, it's busy several times a day. It's, you know, at times of day I avoid going out there simply because of traffic, I just know that it's, you know, you take your life in your hands, you know, trying to get on the 718 from McCagge, and partially is due to the traffic turning from Washington down 718 to get back on the McCagge, or down, down 718, you know, to another section of Troy. This, this item was in the 20, I believe, in the 2021 and 2022 budget, and the 2022 budget is allocated at $275,000 to place a traffic light out at that intersection. Both the, Mr. Tiddrington and the Mayor commented in the last meeting that this is, it sounded like this was a done deal from their comments, and we get to the 2023 budget process, and suddenly this item is completely off the budget. It is not only off the 2023 budget, it is off the next five years' budget. It will not be, is not recommended to consider this for another six years. And, again, there's some mention of a traffic study that the city has done, and the lack of cars or vehicles or activity in that area, and to me, I find that ludicrous. You know, by not enacting this traffic light, we are endangering the lives, or we are continuing to endanger the lives of not only the residents of Stonebridge Meadows, but we're endangering the lives of our children that attend Concord School, and the staff and the bus drivers that bring the children and educate them. And, you know, so unfortunately, as we look at the budgetary process, again, we're up against a, a brick wall here. Again, we do not have the luxury of having a three reading to look at this budget, and so I don't think it benefits, benefits the Council tonight to not approve the budget. But what I would like to ask happen is to have this item put before our President of the Council, to be agreed, to be assigned to a committee, an appropriate committee to take a look at this, so that we can go back and include this item on the 20 amendment and include this item on the 2023 budget. I would also like at this time to ask another item to be mentioned or brought before the appropriate committee to enact legislation, so that the Council receives, the appropriate Council committee receives the budget no later than the, the second Monday of November. And that would give us three readings to take a look at this, any budget in the future, not saying that we have to take three readings, but it gives us that opportunity, and we have liked, I would like to see that the, the budget be placed before committee, before the second Monday in November. I think these are common sense ideas, you know, we have made, I think the city has So we are not going to make that kind of investment with the mindset that maybe in a few years, if things change, we'll just turn it off. That would be totally irresponsible, and based on the, the last set of data, not the current set of data, which, which would be involved in a new study, it would not qualify for ODOT grants, which means that would be entirely funded by the general fund. So we want to be deliberate enough, we want to take, we have to take into account our long-range plan as far as transportation goes, and we also need to take into consideration the, the future reconstruction or renovation, whatever it is, that the schools might undertake with their school buildings. So we didn't ignore that, we didn't arbitrarily pull it out, like I said, and it's something that I can probably, given time, list a dozen other projects where over year for, year to year, it may be below the line, it's a heads up for council, and it's merely a planning item, so it gets on people's radar, that we're looking at this, and it may come up in the next year, especially when you're dealing with six figures, which stoplights nowadays definitely are. So that's where we're at with this, and that's, that's where we would have been had we gone a third reading or we had a longer discussion at the Finance Committee in the budget. We are looking at it, we want to see what the school is going to do, and, you know, if there's a plan that comes into place, a traffic study would definitely be done, along with all of the other parts of the planning that we will have, have to do with the schools and with our long-range transportation improvement plan. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Mr. Phillips, I just, as Chairman of the Finance Committee, would like to say that we would take the comments from the community about a summary page under advisement, Mr. Schilling's comments about being prepared in a more timely fashion under advisement, and I'm not sure that the soliloquies between the two of the people were relevant to the appropriation, so I would join Mr. Twist in a motion to suspend and let the people get paid starting in 2023.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, we have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Severt. Please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Severt to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Severt to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Severt to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Severt to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Severt to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O-63-2022, please?
Ordinance number O-63-2022. Ordinance enacting section 521.12 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, regarding tree trimming and noxious overgrowth. This establishes a new section which would basically follow the same procedure used for tall grass and weeds. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend, suspend by Mr. Whitten and a second by?
Me.
Mr. Twist, okay. Which one included him, I have no idea. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, would you please read our last ordinance of the evening, O-64-2022?
Ordinance dash O-64-2022. Ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to effect a governmental competitive retail natural gas aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to section 4929.26 of Ohio Revised Code, directing the Miami County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rozell and a second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips? Mr. Phillips, sorry.
We both say yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Twist and a second by Mr. Pierce to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. I know. Moving to our communications and announcements tonight, and Mayor Proton, Mr. Lutz?
We usually ask Mrs. Knight to do the announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, but no.
Mr. Lutz?
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Three quick announcements. First of all, I want to wish all of our residents a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. This is the last meeting we have of the year, and I hope our holiday season is hopeful and joyful for everyone coming up in 2023. Yesterday, I was able to drive by Riverside Cemetery, and all the wreaths look absolutely amazing. I know Mr. Kendall worked really hard on that project, and so he deserves our thanks for making some, making our cemetery look a little nicer. And finally, there is a snowstorm coming. I hope residents take proper precautions about the snowstorm. Who knows what we will wind up getting. But as I studied the snowstorm, the thing that worried me is that there could be a rain event a few days afterwards, and I just want to remind residents, if you can clean out your storm drains on your streets, that could prevent any type of street flooding that could occur. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir. Director of Public Service and Safety, would you like to comment any further on the salting and road condition?
We're going to pick the leaves. We are prepared for Armageddon and on call as needed. Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of general announcements. Again, we are closed on the 23rd and the 26th for the Christmas holiday. Recycling and refuse will be on schedule. We will also be closed on January 2nd to belatedly honor the New Year's Day, and again, we are on schedule for recycling and trash pickup. The other thing is, is I don't know how many people have real trees this year, because I understand in the region the inventory has been kind of low, and, yeah, maybe expensive, I didn't price them, but we are going to pick up the real trees after Christmas. We will do so at, between the 27th and till, until the end of January. The only thing we ask is that you make sure that you don't have any plastic, any tinsel, any ornaments, anything hidden in the tree, because we do mulch those up and we use the big grinder. So that's all I have, thank you.
Did you mention a date for the last leave pickup? And I mean that sincerely, I, I, did you mention that date, or is it January 19th, is that the date?
That sounds right, is that, I believe it's the 19th, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but, you know, if we get hit with a weather event, in past years, we may push that off. I think we're pretty well ahead of schedule on picking them up, so I don't know how many piles are there, but certainly we, we always seem to get a straight pile and we'll come and pick it up.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Director Blom, Mr. Kerber, do you have anything for the good of the order?
Believe it or not, I do. All right, I just wanted to say it was a pleasure working with everybody this year, and it was a very successful 2022, and here's to a successful 2023.
Thank you, sir. Our auditor, Mr. Friggy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing at this time.
I would expect nothing less. As President of the Council, I just want to echo the comments of a Merry Christmas to all, and a Happy New Year, and a pleasure to sit in the seat here, occupied by Mr. Lutz. And I, I made this a comment once before about a relative, my, my little brother, and I would appreciate the community and anybody here, so inclined, please keep him in your prayers as he is on his final journey. So if you would do that, I would greatly appreciate it, and that's all I have, thank you. Any members of council have comments, Mr. Rozell?
I'd like to expand on Mr. Lutz's, congratulating Tom Kendall and his granddaughter Madison Maxson, who did take on the Reefs Across America program for the Riverside Cemetery on Saturday. Also, a special thanks to Sean Frantum, Seth Cannon, and Joe Lehman, who came in on their own time to help them get the wreaths out. They distributed 161 wreaths in the initial program, and they hope it grows next year, and they've already gotten around to things that they'll improve. Other than that, I hope everybody have a wonderful, safe holiday season, and we'll see you in 2023.
Thank you.
I have two things real quick.
Yes, sir.